Oh, it's the bills, I'm sorry.
Oh, really? That's nice.
C, H, and 71.
They're the two bond issues together.
Okay.
We're gonna go ahead and get started. If you please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance in moment of silence. My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So who?
I have a motion by Jane. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Ben. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by aye. Are we getting right hands tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do right hands. Board dialogue. I'd like to start off by, board filings closed today, and I wanted to recognize those that have filed for a spot on the Farmington R7 School Board in order by the receipt of application and how they will appear on the ballot. And if they're here, then go ahead and stand up and be recognized. Donna Byford. Jane Bates. Dr. Chand. Lyndle Barton. Joan Sullivan. Dolores Howard. Greg McPhail.
It's McPhally.
McPhally. Sorry about that. Bill Henson. Phyllis Hargus. And Jeff Lawson. Okay. Any further board dialogue? We do need to schedule a work session. What day were we looking at?
Let me say what it's for, for the different approaches to contracting. And there has been a request to schedule it far ahead of time as possible, which is very reasonable, and this is when we can. So want to start it with a Tuesday, suggest March 27th, although that was just an arbitrary pick, and we can go from there. What we would do is to have presenters to explain the concept of performance contracting, project management, and traditional contracting as an information session for the board. There would be no vote on it, but just to develop that information piece. I'm proposing five o'clock, Tuesday, the 27th, with dinner like we did the last time.
March 27th? Sound okay? Five o'clock? Okay.
I appreciate you doing this so far in advance.
It's very reasonable, and again, it should be when we can.
When you can.
Right.
Anything else? All right. This time, I'd like Dr. Cross to present the Heartland Hero Award.
I am in partnership with Angie Winch this month, so I'm gonna defer to Angie. We really are. There were some really neat things that occurred throughout the month of October with Disability Awareness Month, and Lincoln overtook that with open arms and did a phenomenal job. Was lucky enough to watch the assembly where they did some presentations of actually who our Heartland Hero will be, so I will defer to Angie.
Good evening. As you know, in December, my Heartland Hero and Feature Teacher couldn't show, so we decided to do this month also. And my Heartland Hero still couldn't show because he's, him and his son own a business, and so I brought why they are our feature, our Heartland Hero. LT and Tony Blackwood, who run the bike shops in Farmington downtown, I can't remember what the name of the shop is. What is it?
Trans Am Cyclery.
Trans Am Cyclery. And also South Town Bikes in South County, St. Louis. We went to the businesses because we were trying to find businesses that would donate equipment that would allow our students with disabilities equal access to all parts of the school setting. And so, we have a little guy, and I do have permission to use his name, but we'll call him Sammy. That, his name is Sammy. Anyway, Sammy is vertically challenged, and he has his little legs. I was watching them walk down the hallway, him and his aide are walking down the hallway, and for every step he would take, or she would take, he would have to take five, and just to keep up with her. And so, Patrice Parsons and Tim Green were, they got a tricycle there. And he had mastered the tricycle, and it was so cool because he could keep up with everyone else. Well, so then, we were ready, you know, we're trying to graduate him up to the two wheels, and we got the training wheels. And I tell you, whenever they came and brought the bike, he was terrified, just like all of our kids were when they start to ride the bike, the big bike, and he wouldn't get on it, and we all worked and worked and worked, 'cause I'm thinking, oh my gosh, we've got this bike donated, and now he's not gonna use it. Well, now, this is, you hear this, and you know Sammy's on his way, don't you? I mean, he lets you know, and you're gonna get out of his way? No, he is a good little guy. Brought a picture, this is the first day, if you guys wanna just pass it around, of him finally getting on the bike, and, I mean, he's just grown leaps and bounds, not only with this, but also communication, and is just, has freed up a lot of his time, so he can start interacting with other kids and everything. So, we thank them immensely for this, and like I said, I brought the bike because they couldn't come because of the bike shop times. We also have our Feature Teacher here, and we'd like to have Faith Gann come forward. of recognizing her before when she was a teacher at Washington Franklin. This is the second time she's been nominated for Feature Teacher, and whenever you ask the kids, "Why? Why Ms. Gann?", it's because one of the little girls said, "Because you know what? She really appreciates us." And I thought that was such a big word, and such a great thing to say, and, you know, she gives us hugs, and she listens to us, and she recommends books that she knows that we'll like because she hears what we're saying. And I thought that was pretty cool, too. And I mean, she made my son's day today because Wonderstruck came in, and he saw it on the desk, and he said, "I don't know whose it is, but I'm gonna take it and read it." So, you just do an amazing job. She was recommended by her colleagues. Whenever you ask Faith, ask for somebody to volunteer to do something, she's just amazing. She just jumps right in there. For tutoring after school, went around and said, "When do you wanna tutor?", and her response was, "Whenever you need me." And that's Faith. And we appreciate you so much. Thanks.
Faith, you don't wanna say anything?
Oh, I, I just have to say that there are so many really dedicated and talented people I work with, and I am just very honored to be recognized, and I do, I love those kids, and that's why, it makes your job enjoyable when you go work with kids, and it's fun. So, thank you so much.
And her family is here. I should have recognized Jimmy and Jennifer came in to support her, and I appreciate that. That means a lot, guys.
Mr. Lawson, would you like to come forward with the Feature Staff Member?
Good evening. It's not very often that we get to recognize upper administration as Feature Staff Member of the Month. This person has been in the school district for a number of years, has worked for several superintendents, and for several boards. And this person has been on several committees, and has chaired many of them. This person works long, hard hours for the district, and has the student's best interest in mind. Most of the time, he has a smile on his face and a kind word when he speaks to you. He's a fan of Farmington Schools, even though he has a trace of radio blood in. I'd like to recognize Don Eaton.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Well, Mike surprised me. So, but honestly, you know, and I always have blue and gold inside, but of course, I've been here for 30 years, and my kids grew up here, so, you know, I love the school district, I love what I do, so, thanks very much for the recognition.
Are there any student voices tonight? There were a couple of letters that went around the table. Anyone here from CTA?
Hello. We just have a couple of things to report. First, The School and Community Magazine is doing an article on the success of our Districtwide Backpack Program, and that should be run in the spring issue. And then also, in February, we'll be sending out Teacher of the Year nomination process along with the application forms, because those are gonna be due at the beginning of April. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sarah, do you wanna talk about the recognition piece, school board recognition?
Oh, yes, thank you. Well, tonight, we want to thank all of the different buildings there in the process of recognizing our wonderful Board of Education. I think before you get several of the goodies, and if any principals want to comment on it, they're gonna be wined and dined, and each one of us in the district truly appreciates the fact that you do all of this as volunteers in our community, and you do have our students as your first priority, which is such an honor to work with a board of this caliber. Any principals have additions?
Washington Franklin will not accept.
And thank you again.
Thank you all. Can we bring up your board?
I would also like to join the schools in recognizing the school board members for incredible service. The fact that we have so many people who would like to join the ranks of the school board is evidence tonight, really shows that you've created an environment that people wanna join, and see participation as being a very valuable thing. So I really thank you to you for all of the work you do. It is hard, there is a lot of pressure, and I'm sure sometimes you wonder why you've done it, and all you have to do is look at our 4,000 students now, so thank you very, very much for that.
Also want to highlight the work that our staff have been doing in a variety of areas to build partnerships, and to that note, I would like to ask Ms. Christie Scott to come forward. Christie started the program, just to give them a note, for, in partnership with the PAT and the Education Foundation, for the internet marketing. Sounds like something broke, actually. Hopefully, everybody's okay. It's a little, I'm sorry, Christie. Christie started that partnership program with PAT and the Education Foundation, and has started Internet Marketing Class and took it away.
Okay. I'm Christie Scott, and I too have fluid goals.
But we don't hold that against you.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight and to share updates regarding the Internet Marketing Class. I'm grateful to the Farmington Foundation for partnering with the school district and allowing us, you know, to support this class, and it's such a fun class. I just, I'm a first-year teacher, so it's, it's so much fun. This class allows students to have real-life experiences by solving a real problem, which is, how can we, how can we get the information out there about the foundation? How can we educate the alumni and bring them in and become a member as well? So, basically, we're marketing for the foundation, and again, it's just very fun to be able to do this, and I'm honored to be a part of it. First thing I had to do was come up with a list of goals that we were gonna do throughout the year. First was to meet with the Director of the Foundation, and with parents and teachers, and to see what they wanted, to make sure that we were on the same page, and so that everyone was gonna be happy. Also, brainstorm potential ideas and develop an implementation plan, discuss ways to inform the alumni about this foundation and educate them so that they would wanna be a part of Another way was to design and implement print and electronic advertisements for the foundation and for the Parents' Teacher Program, to collect information, alumni information for the foundation in order to create a database, which we use Access for, to write articles for placement in the newspaper, and to create a website for the foundation and for the Parents' Teacher Program, and to record and play profiles of the foundation members on BKTV. And again, all these are just ways to expose our students to marketing and, you know, to teach them how to do that. So towards the beginning of the year, I had Ms. Kim Weekly and Ms. Artie Henson to come in and speak to the class, and they were able to inform us all about what their programs do and how they can help us. So it was great to have them come in, and the students were able to ask questions, and again, it was just a good, good chance to get them to meet each other. Around homecoming, we discussed the goals and objectives of the foundation, and we also discussed how to create flyers and verbal announcements. The students paired up, and they created these flyers, which again, just educated about the foundation, and they, on their own time, they passed these out at the homecoming parade and the homecoming game, again, to educate parents, alumni, faculty about, about what the foundation does. So they did a great job on that, and again, that was on their own time, so I was very proud of them for that. As a class, we created a verbal announcement that was read several times during the game, again, to alum, to educate those individuals about the foundation and what they do. We've gathered information from the online database located on the Farmington website, as well as from Ms. Dorothy Blumenberg, here from Farmington. She's done a great job of keeping an updated alumni list, and so we're using that information, and we're currently creating a database. We're about 75% done, so the students are pretty excited to finish that program. I've promised them donuts after they finish, so they're pretty excited to get finished. And as we continue to cover topics such as communication skills, which are written and verbal, designing print advertisements, and exploring websites, we will be able to meet our remaining goals, which include writing the articles for the foundation and the Parents' Teacher Program, creating the print advertisements, and creating websites for the foundation and for the Parents' Teacher Program. Any questions? Okay, well, again, I would just leave you with my recommendation, is that I would ask you to consider the value of this course and its benefits to our students, and I recommend that we offer the Internet Marketing Class and a variety of marketing courses in the 2012, 2013 year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Does any board member have any questions on any of the information items listed?
You're gonna wanna hear Laura's and you don't wanna hear Michelle's?
Laura?
In your packet, you will find that there is information on a new applicant tracking system that we're putting into place, probably later this week. We're hoping for Friday is our date that we're going to go live with it. But essentially, what that tracking system allows us to do is to facilitate applying to the school district for people who want to put in applications, and it also is gonna make things much easier for us on this end. It allows us to pretty much be paperless until we're ready to select applicants for interview. Then, of course, we'll wanna print and have those available. But it does streamline the process considerably. The nice thing about this particular program is that, I think you have a copy in your packet, that it looks like it's our website. It's all online, all the information is stored securely online, and we own that information, and it's posted, that there's gonna be a link on our website that actually makes it look like it is our website, when in fact, you're reaching out and pulling their information. So, we haven't quite finished this, but the neat thing about it is that applicants can set up their own password and login, then that is available to them to get in and change and update their information as they'd like to, and it allows us to constantly have a fresh application on file. Currently, we store applicants, applications, that kind of, and we have, we have file drawers and file drawers full of them. And we try to keep them for two years, but it has become very cumbersome. And when you have one position, and you have 96 applicants that apply for that, and there are 25 and 30 pages sometimes to an application and resume and supporting documentation, and we're printing all of that out, it's a huge amount of paper to be printing and storing on a regular basis. So this should really help us streamline that process, and it still is very much ours. We control all of the information here.
Can you address what we'll do for people who aren't comfortable with it?
Sure. There, we know that we're going to have people who are simply not ready to apply online, and we don't want to exclude those people from applying with the school district. So we will have a computer here at the board building available for anyone who wants to apply, and we'll have that information available as well on the website, and to people when they come in. And we also will have somebody here available to help walk them through the process if they need a little bit of help getting started. And we, and we know that that's probably going to be true. There's also help online, so those people who have access to a computer and can get in but then have a question, there's help there as well. They can click on that, and it will walk them through, and they, of course, will be able to call us and get support if they need it as well. Any questions?
Ms. Laura, who will have access to the information on that website page once it comes?
The private access for all their private information?
Will it be you yourself?
I will have that access. There will be the Human Resource Facilitator, when that position is filled, that person will. Right now, Janet Portell has access, and I'm not gonna tell you that there couldn't be another administrative assistant, but there could be somebody named, and then all of the principals will have some access. They don't have the same access, but they will have some access to that as well, so. And I should say, they have access to any of those applications that
Apply to their building?
That apply to their building, yes. When someone applies. The applicant will actually be able to select which jobs they want to apply for, and then they can go in and change that and update that as positions become available or go away. There's, there's a piece for emailing and keeping in contact with applicants, letting them know where they are in the process, letting them know what we still need from them to have a complete application on file. But right now, we're interested in getting the actual application up and ready to go, and some of those other pieces we'll add slowly as we get them all personalized for Farmington. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Kim, would you like to come forward with the playground update?
I was asked to give this report, and I guess it stems from, we had some signs up over Christmas break, and I kinda need to go back a few months to an accident that happened at Lincoln. A student was playing standing on equipment where he shouldn't have been, fell, he was critically injured, and his mother called to ask to have equipment removed, and she admitted that he was playing where he shouldn't have been, but after we looked at it and talked to the staff and stuff, we weren't really clear, you know, how it happened. Dr. Thomas asked to have music, our insurance people, come take a look at it and make recommendations, so we got the right stuff removed, and, let's see. National Playground Equipment, National Playground Compliance Group performed an inspection, and there were several items identified as Priority Two, which is a hazard that may cause serious injury, and a few items that were Priority One, hazard that can cause death or permanent disability. Alan Schmidt from Music also inspected the Lincoln equipment, and he, besides the few items that the first group identified, he, he saw three pieces of equipment that should be removed, that was in a, in the fall zone. But because of the short time receiving the report and time before Christmas break, we weren't able to make those repairs, so after talking with Alan, we put up some boards, some barricades, and we posted signs that would read, playgrounds closed during winter break. We put it on the fences, on the posts, you know, where they could be seen. And after returning from winter break, the three pieces of equipment at Lincoln were removed, and we started working on the other equipment, and the signs were removed. And then just today, Alan Schmidt inspected the, all the playground equipment, and there were a few items that needed to be removed or modified, mostly because of the problem of entrapment, where you might get a head caught in a piece of equipment or rope, something like that. He is, he's gonna be mailing me, or emailing me a report probably this week. Most of the, the most prevalent problem was not enough pea gravel underneath the swings and slides in that area. Also some, the timbers in a lot of places are too close to the equipment. They're supposed to be at least six feet, and a lot of them are, are not that far away, so we're gonna be removing those. And according to Mr. Schmidt, the last time that Music, that Music inspected the equipment was in August, August 4th of 2010. Any questions?
Jimmy said it's the first, the National Playground. I missed it. Did you say that they inspected all the playgrounds or just the one at Lincoln?
Yes, all of them.
Okay, thank you.
In the report for Music back in August of 2010, did it reveal these deficiencies too?
I don't remember. I don't, I didn't see that report. I don't remember what they said.
What is the recommendation for playground checks or examinations or studies? Once a year?
I'm not sure when Music does it.
It's yearly. I talked to the superintendent today. They send out a pre-questionnaire that should be returned by the districts annually, and then they follow that up, and they recommend for our coverage that they be inspected annually, because that's the major area for liability, in an area where the safety measures are constantly increasing. So I did check the other areas, other school districts do that pre-survey, and do follow that up with an annual inspection, and we will be too.
And our custodians regularly inspect it, but the list that they were going by doesn't quite match what Music was looking for, so I'm gonna be updating that in a second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Eaton, do you wanna give a report on the second quarter budget?
You have the second quarter budget report, takes us through December 31, so we're halfway through our fiscal year. The good news is that the bottom line really hasn't changed, and I'll take that as good news. I don't think there's been any real negative signs, at least halfway through, as far as revenues, you know, pretty much everything's on revenues, you know, pretty much everything's on target, maybe a little in our favor, but not enough to warrant adjusting the budget at this point, because as you know, the state legislators are just now getting together, and it's always interesting to see what'll happen in the springtime. So what you have really for the second quarter is some administrative transfers. You also have a little bit of local money that comes in for a particular program. And then the big thing, you have the, the final approval of the Title I and II programs. Most of that Title I, our title money is in our original budget, because a lot of it involves personnel, but at that point, we're kind of doing estimates. And it's usually several months, I believe, Laura, before the state is actually to get around to making the final approval. So at this point, we're just making some adjustments to the title budgets. But I do that in a way that's revenue neutral. You know, in the original budget, the revenue matches the expense, so that when we add expenditures later for title, the revenue is equal. So there's, so there's about $192,000 additions for both revenue and expenditures, which offset. So bottom line, we really don't have any changes at this point. The operating deficit is about $190,000, which is just a little bit better than what it was when we started. So, you know, I'm hopeful that, you know, the state right now is prorating at 92% for the formula, which is not good, but it's, but I have 91% of the budget, so there could be some makeup down the road there. Of course, we'll try to do our best with expenditures too for the next six months. At least at this point, you know, we're okay. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do you want to give a quick update on the direct deposit as well?
Sure. The, we're, we're really pretty close right now. There's just a handful of people that we don't have, direct deposit. We had asked for the employees by December 15th to, to come in and fill out those forms, and we got a lot of the forms back. I'd say, I don't know the exact number, because it changes almost daily, but I'd say we're probably down to fifteen, fifteen or twenty at the most. And we, we needed an option for some people who may not have a bank account, or for whatever reason don't want to use their bank account. So when I contacted our depository bank, First State, they put me in contact with a company called Skylight Financial. And Skylight is, just does this service called payroll cards. It's basically a Visa debit card, and the, the way I think it works is the district actually purchases a stock of the cards, which we will obviously keep control of in the vault, and we can issue those to individuals for direct deposit purposes, and their payroll gets loaded directly onto that Visa debit card each month. It's, it's a situation, not very expensive, I believe it was $175, I don't have it in front of me, for like fifty cards. The individuals can use those cards over and over and over. After we actually issued them the card, Skylight I know contacts them, and they can actually get a personalized card, and they can use that forever. It's, it's just basically setting them up with a Visa debit, debit account. And we don't really, I think, have any responsibility after that point, other than just make sure their payroll's on there. They can deal with the company, of course, we can get First State to help us with that if there's any problems. But I know First State had indicated that they have other clients using this, other customers using this service, and they've been happy with it. So I think it's something we can do at low cost, and, and actually, we did have some people, I think, who said, hey, I want to do that. So we'll, we'll be, as soon as we get the application signed tonight, by Mr. Burke, we'll send that in and get that process going. But we're close.
What if they need a replacement card? Or if they lose it?
Yeah, I kind, the Skylight, the representative that I talked to said, basically, it's just like handling, they can, they can notify them, and, and they will take care of that the same as you would any other bank account. The, it's my understanding that with the cards, when we purchase those, we'll have all the informational materials and promotional materials that we can use if we wish to market the program, but it also is going to provide information, schedule of fees, and all those things to the employee. So it's relatively easy for us to set up. We can have an online portal, and it's no different than anybody's direct deposit, because right now, we have to enter their, their account information and their, their bank routing number, and that'll all be there. So we're, we're hoping it goes pretty smoothly.
Is there going to be annual fees with this?
Sorry?
Any annual fees with this, or is this a program we're going to announce, because this is a separate company taking care of the service?
Well, we were referred by First State Bank. We, we buy the cards initially, and I don't think, we don't have any further cost. The employee, there is a schedule of fees, no different than any other bank account or, or anything else, but those are clearly identified. And I noticed, I believe, I looked at the, I think the monthly fee was $2.95, but they waive that if you do two transactions. And it's pretty explanatory. I looked at the list of fees. I don't think it's any different from any of us who have bank accounts and whatever. Didn't seem exorbitant. But that's clearly defined on how they can use that.
When do you anticipate this being all changed?
Well, I'm not sure about Skylight's timeframe. So, you know, the, the representative I talked to, you know, said that they would expedite as fast as they could. I imagine it's just a matter of processing our application. I don't know that we'll make January 23rd payroll, but hopefully by February, we're hoping to get that implemented. Any other questions?
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Cross, regarding this, if I could interrupt just a second, back up to the, the track system, Mr. Popper. Would that be permissible for me to ask a couple of questions, Dr. Cross?
Probably what would be best, if you want to ask it after the meeting, to the person that you want to ask that question to at this point. Dr. Cross, would you like to come forward and, and give an update on special services?
Child count and work policy?
Both.
Both? Okay, I can do that while you're up there. The first piece I would like to discuss is on the policy GBH, and that is staff-student relations. At this point, what we wanted to bring to your attention was that we had received an updated policy that MSBA sends out, annually, they send out their reviews. At this point, what we have currently in policy absolutely fits what it needs to. You will notice that there is a lot of discussion right now in the legislature whenever it comes to electronic communication between staff and students, Facebook. So because that is a hot mess right now, and, and there are several litigating measures with that, we are really looking at this intensely and want to take it to the teachers, we want to take it to committees and groups to discuss this and talk about it, look at several different policies from different areas and recommendations. So at this point, what we have in our policy current is updated to what it needs to be for regulations at this time. But wanted you to also know that that discussion will be out there and sent to committees to talk about. The next piece of information that you have is child count. This is the annual review that is collected each December on the first of the month. Really, you know, it's the same discussion that I had last year. You're going to see that our trends are actually decreasing in the area of special education, and our numbers continue to, to be reduced. At this point, I, I don't know reasons why. It's a neat thing to see. I, I attribute it to the teachers and to differentiated instruction that's happening within the classroom. The, I, I like to think it has something to do with inclusion and how we are really grouping kids according to what their needs are, and really looking at individual needs per child, instead of running to that all hailing, let's refer, let's refer. We really don't have that, that mindset anymore. We did decrease this year over fifty-four students. We're down. Our percentage continues to decrease. We are at a 13% currently. I believe when I first, and I am in no way, shape, or form attributing this to me, but I think eight years ago when I came in, we were at an 18%. We were really, really up there. We were at a 17.6%, I believe. We're down to 13. That's phenomenal. The state average again continues to decrease, as our trend does. The state is at a 12%. I don't think you're going to see anything really glaring in that. We, we pretty much hit along with the percentages of the categories of disabilities right along with the state. We are again high, I'm going to preach on this, we are a little high again on our speech articulation, and we've talked through that and, and language impairment at this time. So I will be looking at some different ways to talk with the speech therapists and pathologists just to see what else can we do to, to get those numbers down. Are there any earlier interventions that we need to put in place to reduce these numbers? Other than that, I'll take any questions that you might have at this time.
I have one, on the, on the homebound and hospital.
Yes.
Are those more, okay, we're hoping to get those back into the school?
Into school.
Or some of them are going to be there like?
You, you, I'm glad you brought that up, Jane. You're going to see that this year, we're not significantly higher, but we do have, the identification of our homebound is, I will say, we have a larger population at Midwest Learning Center currently that is special services. They have IEPs. There's a higher number of percentage of IEP students, and they are, a lot of them on homebound, whereas, you know, I, I probably need to look at that and review whether I want to put some of those students who are attending school three hours a day as a part-time student. What is my part-time category as, as compared to homebound? That's my mistake, I should have caught that earlier to, to make that change, perhaps. I need to look at that. It's all in the way that it's categorized now within the CIST program. And as you know, those students attend anywhere from, from five hours a week, six hours a week, to fifteen hours a week, to twenty hours a week. They're all individual based on what their needs are, and I think that does contribute a little bit more to that higher rate of, of homebound at this time. I will say there's an upswing in homebound right now, but you're also going to watch that filter out. We, we do it all the time. Not too concerned about it, but I do need to take a look at that Midwest Learning Center coding.
I thought this was a very clear and concise report, very easy to read.
Yeah, I like it. It comes straight from Destiny. It's not my typing. They do a very fine job of this.
But you wrote all those little numbers in there. Ashley, thank you for saying this.
You're welcome.
It's really easy to read.
Thanks, Dr. Cross. Moving on to action items. Action items C, H, and I have been pulled. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve items D, E, F, and G. Have a motion by Kevin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Ben, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. I skipped B. I am really sorry. I don't know my alphabet that well. Let's, I'd entertain a motion to approve action item B.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Bates, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Ben, any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Sorry about that, Janet. Trying to make things difficult for you. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to pay all bills with the exception of those two signs, et cetera, and Farmington Sports and Rehab. Have a motion by Dr. Ben, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Now I'd entertain a motion to pay the bills to signs, et cetera.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Bates, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Ben, any discussion? All those in favor? And I'd entertain a motion to pay the bills to Farmington Sports and Rehab.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? And all abstaining? All right, so Kevin abstaining on him. Action item H and I. Any discussion? First, before we discuss, I'd entertain a motion to approve placing Proposition Kids on the April 4th ballot along with the ballot language.
Make the motion.
Have a motion by Ms. Trankin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bates, and now discussion?
We had a meeting Thursday, and we discussed, and a lot of people had discussed wording. I guess all this wording has changed. I just, I just got it today, so I really can't.
The changes that were requested are in there.
I just haven't had a chance to look at it.
And I want kind of both H and I together. So on the, the motion, so.
Oh, they're both together?
They're both together.
I believe, is the, the date April 3rd rather than the 4th? Okay.
Thanks, Jane. I would just like to reiterate from my perspective, had a very valuable work session last week. I think a lot of people have put a lot of time and effort into this project. I'd like to thank Mr. Eaton for his work with the community groups organizing the needs, and then, of course, for our administrators and, and all who've served on that project to identify those needs as we, we look towards this bond issue, so.
There was a lot of input from the many people that were there, Ben and everybody. It's just, everyone seemed very informed about what they were saying. They had lots of good things to say, lots of good input for why we needed it, and even pictures.
Just so you know, there were forty-four people here in addition to the board members.
Really?
I'd like to echo the same thing. I really appreciate everybody spending all the time that they did and the effort and thought process. Anytime you come to an issue like this, you know, there are a lot of good things, and there are a lot of not-so-good things that have to be considered. I personally, you know, think that as a board, it is our responsibility to be fiscally responsible for the district and for the buildings and the employees and the kids. So even though it, it is a no-tax increase issue that we're talking about here, it still will, in the long run, cost a little, cost everybody a little bit of money. But I think that, you know, for our kids' safety and for their comfort, and, and to be competitive when they leave the R7 School District, that this needs to happen. We've got, you know, their safety, not only from the roofs falling in on top of their heads, but the doors being locked and secured, the buses, those types of things. You know, a comfort, comfortable working environment is good for anybody. I know that we had an issue at the, at the middle school here, and the kids didn't have any heat for three or four days, and I had a student over there myself, and he said it was cold. You know, all these things are going to be addressed with this bond issue, and I think it's very important for everybody to keep that in mind. And, and finally, for the, for the competitive part, you know, we are, we're behind in technology. We have computers that are over ten years old throughout the whole district, and I don't see how our kids can be competitive when they're graduating high school and going to college if, and we have the technology in place for, for the kids to learn. So I'm fully in support of this issue, and, and for those people that, that are also in support of it, I, I encourage you to, to talk about it with everybody in the community and in the district.
I, my eyes, I mean, I've always known this, but whenever you go into the buildings and you realize that you can walk right into the front door, and it's a very frightening thing to think that people can just walk in the door. And sometimes they're not even seen, and they don't always read the signs that say visitors need to report to the office. They don't, you know, it's just so many things that we could make so much safer. And we, our buses, whenever we toured the buses, some of them are very old, and they're still very safe. Stacy and the, and the mechanics make sure that the buses stay safe, but pretty soon, we're not going to be able to find parts for them. So there are just so many things to look at that need to be considered when, when people are voting for this. They need to actually step up to the plate.
I think another eye-opening figure for me was regardless of whether or not this bond issue passes, the district is looking at 1.6 million dollars in repairs that will have to be completed next year to our roofs. And obviously, if there is not a bond issue to help fund that, that dollar amount's going to have to come out of operations. So I, I think we have to look at our critical needs, and that 1.6 million is a critical need that this bond issue will help. But regardless of whether it passes or not, we're going to have to be making plans for that 1.6 million, one way or another. So. So I also encourage our district staff to strongly look at what this bond issue is all about and how it will impact them, but more importantly, how it will impact our kids. So I also am strongly in support of it. Any more discussion on items H or I?
We need to make sure the change on the date. Make the motion.
Janet, I would like to request a roll call vote on action items H and I.
Burke?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
On?
Yes.
Hank?
Yes.
Roethlisberger?
Yes. All right. Well, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I move that we move into closed session for the purpose of approving minutes and discussing personnel pursuant to Section 610.021, Subsections 3 and 13, as listed on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Janet?
Two seconds.
Yes.
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 Davis?
Yes.
On?
Yes.
Hank?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming. Have a great evening.
Bring you guys the press release that I just, thank you.